So it's 6:02 just about, let's call the meeting to order. It's August 26th. What do we got here? Any adjustments to the agenda? I was gonna add something under the road commissioners report, but that's not really an adjustment.
Should we hold off on the town hall roof stuff? Because Chris isn't here, should we postpone that, do you think?
Yes.
Okay.
No, I was just looking, I haven't done my...
Okay, I haven't really either.
Yeah, okay. So Chris is not here today, tonight. So we're gonna postpone the town hall roof replacement discussions under other business. Minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. You can sign this and pass it on. Here's a copy for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment, no public. Okay. Town clerk's report, Robin Durkey.
I got hold of the Times Argus, the World Gazette.
Yep.
Times Argus said the first time they were gonna run it was this past Saturday.
Yep.
And then they will run it, and the World's gonna run it for two weeks. And I got hold of the Gazette today and they said they did get the request and it will begin the paper this week.
Okay.
Can you tell us what the news is gonna be running?
The advertisement for the treasurer.
Okay.
Brandy asked us to do that.
I just couldn't...
And Gillespie's is scheduled to come tomorrow to switch the hot and cold air around down in the basement. Where's the guy's name up? Or the quarry? With the trash?
Graham, Casanel Graham.
We had another complaint about his property today, that there's no rats running around on that property.
In the middle of the woods?
Oh, right.
Who would notice that?
Anybody who rides those trails, it's on the vast trails.
Do people do that? People ride right by there?
It's a class four.
I mean, I haven't been out there for years, so I don't know. Maybe there should be a sign that says, "Speed up."
They made a comment that they've complained to us twice and we haven't done anything, they're going to the state now.
This is a neighbor, right? And he's concerned because it's, the trash is attracting bad things like onto his property?
Yep.
No, his property is far away. I mean, really, it's...
Animals travel in a distance of... It's a bear issue, so yes.
Okay.
Well, that'd be interesting to see. I mean, the other person that's on the list for the state to address complaints is... I told him as a town health officer, I had been there and I hadn't found any garbage or any human waste or anything, and I couldn't see any public health threat. But he said he was still gonna go there because it is still a solid waste dump. You know, it's a too much stuff jump. I guess they call that solid waste dump. But we'll see.
And nobody stepped forward yet to be health officer, still you?
Yes.
Right? Okay.
Is that the out person that's gonna go in this night? Is it the same person?
He's the same person that's, yeah.
That's done it for a number of years?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Robin, where was that again?
It's off the Cabot Road.
It's a class four across from Tom Brooks's behind Phil.
It's not on Old Corey Road?
No.
No.
It's a class four that's out behind Phil Edson's house.
That's the one that I, the one I was talking about was the one on Old Corey Road.
Right, I was confused.
Yeah. So as far as the office goes, Skip has the... I asked why they wanted to put all this special equipment out in the dark and dirty basement? And they said, "Were they just hoping not to be in the way of any office space that we might create down there?" And he said, "Oh, we hadn't thought of that." So he's thinking about putting it in, you know, on that same back wall, but on the outside, like inside the room.
Where my big cabinet should be.
Right. Right, where the, yeah, where that's... But that can't be done until that sheet rock is fixed.
Well, if that was gonna go in there, they wanted plywood behind it, not sheet rock.
Well, it's still gonna have sheet rock, the bottom half still has to have sheet rock. And the top half is all holes and stuff that need to be plastered.
Yep.
So I don't know if they still want plywood on top of the sheet rock.
I wouldn't think it matters, I'm sure as long as they've got plywood to mount to.
What?
I'm sure as long as they've got plywood to mount to.
No, they would just have two-by-fours to mount to.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure they need plywood.
Oh, you think they mean plywood on top of the sheet rock?
Definitely, I thought you were...
I'll get the sheet rock down, then put the plywood up.
It's probably easier to go right over the top of it. And they won't need to do any work behind it because that plywood's gonna just, you know, be there forever. So I don't think there's really a holdup. Like, they could go ahead and do that before the rest of the work is done, I would think.
It's all gonna be above the four-foot part that's got no sheet rock on it?
It depends how much these they need, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know how much room they need.
Any chance that there're gonna be any sheet rock work?
Yeah, Michael's gonna get to it in a few weeks. And I pretty much told him it'd be better to contact you just because...
Yeah, I haven't heard from him yet.
Okay, I'm sure he's trying to get there.
Yep.
Well, as soon as that duct work is done tomorrow, they should be able to, should be clear sailing for sheet rock when you can get there.
And we still have four dogs left that have not been licensed for the town yet. That will be getting turned over to...
Ed?
Ed.
Well?
Yep.
Now, I think Ed called me and wanted me to tell you, Brandy, that he had followed up on the dogs on Old Corey Road. But you probably knew that by now because...
He came in and talked to us.
I know the person came in and registered them.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, good.
And then the other thing I have is somebody would like to see that refrigerator that's down in the middle of the village, on the side of the road, removed.
Wonder where that came from?
It sort of showed up after the July 10th flood.
Yeah, but did it float out from behind?
I have no idea where it came from, but that's where it ended up, I think.
Yeah.
Where is it?
It's right on Route 14 at Jacob's Post.
Was it out back? I wonder if it was out back?
A child's line or something typically.
Yeah. Well... It's a lot better than it was this time last year. There's only, I wonder if anybody ever got that kettle thing? If anybody ever bought that or if it finally got stolen?
No, Chris took it, it's over on Chris's property.
Oh, good, okay, good.
Would that be the responsibility of the present property owner of that house?
I would assume so.
The refrigerator?
Yeah. Is it right there, it's right attached to the house?
Yeah.
And we don't know where it came from.
Or is it on town property, over the crossroads?
I don't know, probably on state property, it's within the right of way.
It looked like it came out of the house during the flood.
I can't imagine where else it could've come from unless somebody dumped it there, and that would make sense. Yeah. Okay, well, put that on the list, I guess, somebody...
Want me to give Jake a cough and see if it's his and see if he's willing to do something with it?
You could, I guess.
Maybe if we just put a free sign on it?
Yeah.
Right?
You wouldn't even have to have a...
Five dollars if you pay.
You wouldn't even have to have a sign, just spray paint on it. I mean, how long did the hot tub sit there? Long time. Okay. Anymore on the pest control?
I talked with, um... Is it Mary Ellen?
Mary Jo, Mary Jo Llewellyn.
Yeah, her. And she says the best thing, she's gonna send me some articles to read. And she thinks the best thing to do is go like out to Obuchan's and there's pest bags that we can get.
Well, she said, uh, she said Agley, but probably just other places it's called. Mouse, oh gosh, now I can't remember, mouse safe or something like... Anyways, yeah, I'm gonna get some of those myself.
But she said the price for that exterminator was way out of...
Well, I don't like the idea of going around and trying to, trying to close any holes in that basement. I mean, it's, it's a really old building. I'm sure they could probably come in right through the bulkhead if they want to. But, yeah, to get something that would just make them wanna go away. Also, I don't like the idea of any pest control outside of the building when you've got a family with little kids living right next door. But I would like to see them do something about those ants. So it's hard to tell from this estimate which part is about the ants.
Yeah, they didn't separate it.
What?
They didn't separate it.
No, well...
But it just, it seems outrageous.
What?
It seems outrageous.
The price?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I had to deal with carpenter ants on my camp, Nichols Pond, just had a can of spray. Sprayed it into the, you know, they were actually, they were eating the two-by-fours to hold the roof up. I just sprayed it into any different spots where I saw them and that did the trick.
Weren't you gonna do that at one point?
Yes. I volunteered.
You volunteered and?
No.
Haven't done, haven't done it.
The floods came.
What?
The floods came.
Oh, yeah, you've been busy.
The excuse works every time.
He just doesn't love us anymore.
No, that's not it. I can still do that. But the last meeting, I think, we talked about hiring somebody, so I...
Yeah, well, I think hiring somebody, you know, just to spray for ants seems like a... What they're asking for here is $505. And then, bi-monthly, for 11 months, 105, they wanna come back every two months for $105. So, yeah.
The thing is that blew my mind going with them is that I know somebody personally that has them come once a year. Does around the complete house, gets rid of spiders for $150 bucks.
Really?
So I don't know where they figure, do it's a business, that we're gonna...
Deep pockets, I don't know. Anyways, I think we'll just keep waiting for somebody to do the spraying. Is that something that, oh, you wanna volunteer?
No.
Oh geez, why'd you raise your hand?
Who was that person?
The what?
Who was that person? Perhaps a...
The company?
Yeah, who was $150 monthly.
It was the same...
Same company?
That's the same company.
Yeah.
Seems odd.
Yeah, no.
And our building is so simple, you know, it's not like there's a lot of rooms and things like that. But anyway. Okay. Treasurer's report.
Yep. Over the last two weeks, tax receipts taking in $3,550.88, in which delinquencies that were part of that, $3,350.88, prepaid taxes was $200. Payroll, $9,585.2, accounts payable, $18,660.27. I transferred last week $6,000 to cover expenses. I did not cover, as you can see on your balance sheet, were negative. It's not staying that way. I did not transfer money. We have had, just today while we were open, 12 people came in and paid their property taxes. So I will not be transferring money to cover that. So it's not staying that way. I'm just not taking any more out of the money market.
And you're not using the line of credit yet?
Nope.
Good.
Good.
It's there and I know it's there, that's my comfort. But until $245,000 from the money market is gone, I will take that week.
So when people start calling about the ad for the town treasurer position, hopefully by that time we'll have a review.
The Swettworths email, do either one of you get that email?
No, Robin gets it.
Okay.
So I just figured it would be, should be one place, and then she distributes it to...
Gotcha.
Yeah, instead of giving the phone number and all that stuff, I'd rather have just one, one point of contact and... Don't miss any.
Yep.
On the other hand, you know, you don't wanna push it either. Brandy.
That's all for me.
Well, can't look my coffee cup here. So... Road report.
Uh, so, we've got lots of reports. We've got most of the big culverts replaced. The ones that were chronic problems. Started the bridge today. And last week, we did a bunch of sand hauling. So we did three days there, and then Thursday, we ran the grader. Just to try to spread ourselves out a little bit. They called for rain all day, all last week, so that's why I decided to do the sand hauling. Incidentally, it's been raining a lot. But that's our forecast these days. I know there's still a bunch more ditching that we need to do. Michael and I have prioritized grant work, so as soon as I get the bridge. And then there's the one more project, which is Nichols ledge. And then I can go on to our normal summer projects, hopefully.
Yeah, that'll be September probably.
Definitely in September, yeah.
So is Nichols ledge road passable at all or...
I went through it with a 550 the other day. It's rough, it's not, I wouldn't take a Subaru or my Subaru through it. It's just very low, but I think one day up there, we can have it fixed and have it back to the way it was. So that's on my to-do list. Any questions?
I wanted to share that after our last meeting, there was some questions about Corkscrew Road. Brandy thought, I mean, not Brandy, I'm sorry, Lizzie, asked questions about whether it was really a road. I thought I had seen this somewhere before in my years in the office. Sure enough, I found it. Right here. This is a survey done for the... The Timber Company, Edihide.
Trying to orient myself, where's Route 14, is this Route 14 right here?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay.
By Russell Demming, who's generally agreed to be a surveyor, yes. Yeah, and it was in 1990 it was done. I think it was Bardell Land and Lumber at the time, I didn't get all of it, but... Healthy? Oh, you might need one too, Skip, in case, in case we have to prove to FEMA that it is a town road.
Okay, well, that makes me feel...
I mean, I did look, this is what it says, the Corkscrew Town Highway. Town record book two, in parentheses, the brown one, page 334, 335, May 24, 1886. And then it says, "Partial reroute Penn Road for public use." And somewhere else here, it says, "End two roads wide." And it shows, it goes all the way up to Town Highway, I think this is Buck Lake Road. It goes across the railroad line and down, and really, the Corkscrew part is right before it gets to Route 14. And then it even shows a little bridge there.
Thanks for digging that up.
I tried to look up that, well, it says the brown book, but all of our books in the last 20 years have been redone. And they all have red covers now, so it could be that, or it could be another book that's up on the top of the shelf that I didn't dig out. So anyways, that's the start. I'll get more.
So is Corks, is Corkscrew Road considered a town road all the way up to Buck Lake?
You know, it hasn't, as far as I know, since it hasn't been thrown up. You're the one that had, so who asked, you asked?
I was...
I mean, Michael, I think, has said that he's walked it, hasn't he? Did you say you...
Yeah, I've walked it, it's amazing up there, there's just all kinds of old granite cores.
Robin, please.
I call them almond pop cores, where it's just a little bit of lead and it's just going, it's just blocks of granite all over.
Aquas.
Yeah, it's like a granite fence or...
Pass go.
So on this map, I can see Route 14, I can see the bridge. Where's Buck Lake? Is that highway?
Buck Lake is on the map. But Buck Lake Road is the Town Highway.
Is Town Highway E?
Yes.
Okay, so that's Buck Lake Road.
So I think the, oh, the railroad is called out here, that's just a dotted line roughly parallel to Route 14. So it's possible that if someone wanted to log any like Fislot or any of those Bardell Land and Lumber lots, they could use that road and then they could possibly use part of the rail trail. I mean, I think that's been done before in the winter, it's been used for logging, but hopefully it's not.
So is this a class four road?
That's what it, well, what does it say?
It says a pet road.
It does say, since at one point, there was a partial reroute Penn Road for public use, I don't know what that means.
So is a pet road equivalent to a class four?
Well, a pet road just has a gate, right? Isn't that the definition?
Pet road can have a gate.
So if it's not class one, two, or three, it's gotta be class four, right?
It has to be a town road in order to be considered a pet road.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's just a private road and they can tent it if they want.
So was there work done on this recently because of the, was it July 10th flood?
Just the bridge down at the bottom.
Diana, did these two pieces hook together?
Yeah, I didn't get the whole thing.
Or is there another section in here?
Yeah, there would be more, I didn't get the whole thing, yeah.
So, yeah.
I haven't, so 24 flood, we did not work on.
23 flood.
Right, right.
Yes, last year, we did not work on, this year, that's some stains and damages.
So where was that?
Road up above.
Oh, right here.
Well, Corkscrew Road is woods.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a basically unused road.
Haven't been up there looking for damage.
I haven't, but it's possible that it is, Michael, I mean, it's pretty steep.
It's very steep coming down.
So it's most likely it probably is.
Especially below the rail trail, you know, the trail.
Right, right.
What was that, number eight?
We want the Buck Lake, probably from Stratton Road and Harvard, when we reclassify that section of the road to a trail.
So...
Okay.
What we got on that?
Did we nullify VTранs, that that is a class four road, so that's put on the next rendition of a map or...
I don't know why. You know, they're not gonna give us, what?
FEMA would certainly want that classified as a class four road.
Would they?
Yes. Short answer, yes.
So this wouldn't be enough to show them that it is a class, that it is a town road?
Yeah, this is the water, but this is Frosty's, so this is on the other side of her hill.
We can ask them to come out.
They won't come out.
No, I mean, for VTранs to come out.
No, they do, they send a notice every year. VTранs is asking if there were any changes, if roads being built up or added. And that time is already gone for this year.
So somebody should reach out to them, then not wait till next year, because they may move on it sooner, right? Who should, what's that?
With any year of July 10.
Okay, so who should reach out to them? Who should reach out to them?
I can do that.
Okay, thank you, Diana.
They have a lot of, VTранs has a lot of old records that we don't even have. So they might even have something on this. I've always had an intention of going down there, I forget what it was. I guess it was when I was researching the Nichols Dam Road, I never got there. They have a lot of stuff. Okay.
That road is not in its vocabulary. Yeah, yes, it's not really an official classification, but it does imply that there's a gate somewhere.
They don't have, and, you know, they don't give us any money for class four roads.
Yes, they do.
VTранs does?
FEMA.
FEMA.
Oh, no, but I mean VTранs. So as far as whether or not it's on the map, they probably don't care. It's not, it's not like any hair off there if they didn't, if they had it. Right, yeah.
Right, for future reference.
Do you want to have to go dig it around again next time?
Right.
It'll be more obvious.
Yeah. Okay.
Have you created, um... Oh, yeah, turn on my phone. That road that goes down past Paul Betts's house, Charter here?
Charter here was done Thursday, it was a cement road. And then it was, the grader went out west, kind of up County Road, and fixed a few spots.
Okay, because we had somebody coming in asking about Charter here.
Several complaints also, so, yeah, no, that's... Several complaints also, so, yeah, no, that's been created in Florida.
Thank you.
Oh, Chris is here.
Okay, so that's different roads?
As far as I'm concerned, unless there's further questions.
Ah, here comes Chris. Wow, here's the fun part.
Where were they? In the grass.
Oh, of course.
You didn't have to get your spare. You found them.
I did, I had to get a spare.
That's good.
It happened that somebody was walking by and he said, "What are you doing?" I said, "I'm looking for my keys." And they go, "There they are."
Oh, my God.
Nice. Anyway.
I'm glad you found them.
Sorry to interrupt.
So we just finished the road report. Do you have any questions? I was showing the results of my research.
About Corkscrew?
Yeah, about Corkscrew Road, and this is what I found in Russell Deming's survey from 1990. And Skip thinks that won't be enough to convince FEMA that it's a town road.
Which knows.
If anybody knows, you do. So this, that's a, and then that turns into a Class 4 road that.
Well, if you read this, it doesn't say Class 4 road. It says.
Turns into a trail.
It says Town Highway. All it says is Town Highway, and then down here it says there's a partial reroute with a pent, uh, pent road for public use. But Skip thinks it should say Class 4 Road.
Skip thinks it should be classified whatever V-Trans classified. If V-Trans changes the categorization from a pent road to a Class 4 road.
What did you say, what'd you call it?
A Class 4 road can be a pent road.
What's a pent road?
A pent road is something that can be gated. For example, if somebody wants to have their cows not be able to run down the road.
Yeah, okay.
So if you can find the record book that's referred to here, there may be documentation that a former select board in 1886 or whatever.
Yeah, I don't think I have to go that far.
Classified it as a Class 4 road. And then you don't have to.
We have the book and page number, but I just can't find the book.
Okay, it must be there somewhere.
And it's actually a script, which I can read, but very hard. But like I said, they want me to go to V-Trans and see whether we can get it put on the map, town map officially, so that this bridge repair can be covered.
Skip, will that satisfy FEMA if Diana calls V-Trans and tells them that we have documentation that it is a Class 4 road? Email, yeah. And that'll take care of the whole issue with FEMA.
They say that this Corkscrew Road is changed from a pent road to a Class 4.
Do they have it classified as a pent road right now?
What this says.
No, no.
It says partial reroute, reroute, pent road for public use. And, but up here it says Town Record Book Two, The Corkscrew Town Highway. And it gives the book and page numbers and the date. And then it says partial reroute, pent road. It's hard to say which part was pent or which part was rerouted, but.
Okay.
Pent road is not the, I mean, the Town Highway, I would think it's the most important thing that it says there.
Well, Town Highway, it says Town Highway Three, Town Highway Two, Town Highway Four.
And some.
Those pens not in.
But the Town Highway, Class 4 road can be a pent road, can have a section that's a pent road. We went through this last year.
A Class 3 road, you cannot put a gate on.
Not unless you get permission to have it be a pent road.
For the Class 4, you can tent it.
But you still have to have town approval.
Right, which apparently that just happens, right? Because it's saying on the survey that it's a pent road. I think it was originally a Class 4, and then they pented it. Somebody got the town to, to pent it.
But that doesn't make it not a Class 4, right? It just means it has a gate.
The classification just changed.
Is that road?
Yeah.
Probably because the lumber company used it to access their road, and if everybody else was using it, it would get ruined.
And so it was.
So is that road listed as a town road currently? And if it is, is it listed as a Class 4?
Randy has the list, not on.
No, it's not on there. That's why I went looking for it.
And it's not on the V-Trans 2014 map, which is the most current.
Right.
So if you, I would suggest that you try to find the record that's referred to here and see if there's any. Because that's what FEMA is going to want. I mean, this is a surveyor's map, so chances are, and the surveyor is a good one, and with a good reputation, but so chances are it is a Class 4 road, but I think for FEMA, they would want more than a surveyor's map.
All right, well then.
It's a must.
That's what we've got.
It's a must.
I'll look for it tomorrow.
Because what we have to do is we have to, if you guys go in the Wayback Machine, a damage inventory sheet. And that damage inventory sheet categorizes the road Class 3 or Class 4. Also categorizes, describes the damage, gives lat long and lat long of the damage, and descriptions and length of the damage. So they will not accept anything other than a Class 3 or a Class 4 road. A pent road won't fly. They want that just totally disregarded. So with the classification, you cannot fill out a damage inventory and be reimbursed for Alfie's work on that road.
But, okay, but you keep calling it a pent road, but there was a part of it was a pent road, but it still says Town Highway, so I gotta write that.
We'll let them know what you find out. Thank you. We'll turn it out.
Yep. They have a lot of old stuff, yeah.
They will see that it either is a Class 4 or it is not. And then they'll, they'll put their stamp on it and say, yes, it's a Class 4 or no, it's not. That's what needs to happen. The pent, the pent is throwing us off.
Exactly, exactly.
It can be any Class 4 road. It could be a trail. It's a pent. It means it can be put a gate up. Gate can be down. So we're just going to verify that it is a Class 4.
Is there a gate on it?
No.
Even further up?
Well, maybe they're used to.
Michael has actually walked it at one time, but.
It's a fascinating walk. I highly recommend it. No, really.
Yeah.
That history and what you see along the road.
We can do our next meeting out there instead of here.
Okay.
Just a gate there, yeah.
That would be great.
Yeah, now walk from Buck Lake to Harvard is fun, but that was a few years ago. I don't know if I could make that now. Okay, Recovery Officer Report. And there was also an email from you that you wanted, does the town want to apply for FEMA disaster relief for the latest disaster declaration?
Yeah, I presume that you guys want to.
Yes, please.
So I'll just back up. I tried to do that today, presuming that you folks would want to, and I was thinking, and the website wouldn't let me do that. Because, because it said you're already part of Disaster 4720, which is last year's disaster. And you cannot apply for a new disaster. So which.
Oh, for God's sake.
Which had my head spinning, and I tried everything I could. So I have to talk to the program delivery manager on our call on Wednesday and find out what's going on. My Diana and I can't be associated with this new disaster. We'll sort that out.
Thank you.
So they would, do you have to have separate people or different people for each disaster?
No, it's just, just, it's a nuance in their website. If you're part of this old disaster, which is 4720-dr, you cannot apply to this 4810-dr, because you're already doing this other disaster.
Probably not used to having so many disasters all at once.
I'm sorry.
They're probably not used to having so many disasters all at once.
But they should be, though.
Right.
Right, but it might, might have something to do with the same, like, some of our agents are FEMA agents.
That's true.
We never had the same one at, at each time, right? There was a new one that came to visit every time, so maybe that's just.
We're number five. We're number five.
No.
So, but that's okay. We trained them and.
Then they go away.
Go away.
So they go have somebody else.
Yelling and screaming from Woodbury. So, project updates. Excuse me, this is as of this morning. So we are in receipt of $6,533 from the state of Vermont, and that's right there. This is called a financial report form, so that was sent out, I want to say, on 7/14. So I think Randy received that.
I did.
So that's the first check.
One, one only we've yet.
Yeah. So today I signed two financial report forms. One totaling $62,533, and that's for work on East Hill Road. And the second one was for $6,775, and that was for Town Highway 24 Bridge. So this, these two forms are the precursor of another form that I'll have to sign, which allows the money to flow into Randy. So I'm presuming within this week, we'll be getting like $70,000 into the treasury.
Really?
Truly.
Wow.
I thought they were out of money.
That was my question.
Well, I heard today that Congress is going to pass a funding bill so that it will sustain FEMA through this year.
Okay.
So, and also I heard a report that some of the congressmen, or senators, at least one from Vermont or Grumbley, with the way FEMA does their work, you know, because they heard from their constituents saying that this is unwieldy, you know, having to train people all the time and having to respond to questions like this. And I just thought I would do this as a, as an example of what we have to do. It's here somewhere. So I got a question last week, and I can just remember it. Hi, I hear of this. But this is from the new program delivery manager. So she said that the Environmental Historic Preservation Group within FEMA that we're working with desires to know the source and GPS coordinate location of the materials used to repair the roads.
Oh, my God. What?
That's what I said in so many words. So I wrote back, you know, and said, "This is an unusual request and the first of its kind we've been asked to respond to." So I responded, and I ticked off five separate locations from which Alfie sourced the material. But I refused to give the GPS locations. I said, "Here's where we got it from, and if you guys want to do the GPS locations, go for it."
Local maps.
Because that, to me, is just a waste of my time. They have all this information, and it's just incredible that they would reach out and say, "Okay, what's the GPS location?" To me, that's just lazy on their part, and I can say this much too granular.
So is big.
We all know what you mean now.
Yeah, really.
So anyhow, you know, it's like they need to understand where every pebble comes from, and that's just excruciating for Diana.
Well, you could just give them a GPS for the quarry and tell them to go take a look.
Well, they sent them maps, you know, they have maps of all these locations too. And that, that's been sitting in their queue since October of 2023. It's just stunning. So, okay, where we are. So we have four obligated projects, of which we got paid for Town Highway 23 Bridge Replacement. We will be paid for East Hill Road and Town Highway 24. We're waiting for documentation like this, these financial records from the state for Old Quarry and Lake Hill Roads and Cabot Road. So those are the only obligated projects in which we can expect money in the next couple of weeks or so. Projects in process, and these are pending environmental and historic review. Still, North and South Parks with very hard-wrecked rail trail, and an all-encompassing project which includes Uba Road, Frosty Hill Road, et cetera, et cetera. Follow-up projects pending hazard mitigation completion. It's Town Highway 24 Bridge Mitigation, work not complete and will write for an extension. I have more on, on that project later in my presentation. Follow-up projects pending CRC project development, and that's Consolidated Resource Center in Puerto Rico. That's Town Highway 23 Bridge Mitigation Project, and again, that work's not complete and will write for an extension. So there are three projects that have been sitting in their queue since October and haven't been touched. North Hattie Bell Road, Nichols Pond Road, et cetera. There's like three or four more roads associated with that project. County Road and Cabot Road, sections 10 and 20. Follow-up on projects pending initial project development, projects not completed. There's just one, and that would be Town Offices. The radar sign got lumped into that project. Don't ask me how and why, but FEMA said that it should be. So as soon as the Town Office work is complete and I can do the calculations between how much the insurance paid and how much is left over, I can submit that and we can get that moving towards being obligated. So, and discussion. So there are, as we all know, the Town Highway 23 and 24 projects, we're going to write for mitigation projects. And they'll be exceeding, I don't know, hundreds of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars for each. So FEMA is going to write the mitigation plan, because for us, for me to write a mitigation plan, I'm not a professional engineer. It would be out of my scope. I just wouldn't do that. So Diana, thank you for reaching out to our town engineer, Mr. Siccar. Okay, and he sent back some preliminary design work, and I sent that along to FEMA today. So FEMA now has the H&amp;H study, hydrology and hydraulics study. They have the DeWolff estimate. And now they have our PE engineers designed for that. And I wrote to our PDMG saying, "What else do you need?" I mean, they have, you know, arduary cost, if you want to call it that. They have the H&amp;H study from A&amp;R, and now they have our engineer. They should be able to go forward and write a mitigation plan.
I'm concerned that on the H&amp;H, they list four things that are four standard things, but the one that Nate's suggesting, I'm not sure was one of those.
It was, I looked at it, and it's like an amalgamation of a couple.
Yeah.
So it, it'll pass, I think, muster from A&amp;R.
Because I hope they, I hope that they realize that V-Trans doesn't tell us what to do. They tell us what we can do, but they don't.
Options. They're, they're.
Yeah.
And he said that within the body of his email, you know, so I think these are both designs are amalgamation of the H&amp;H.
So just had a question about how will that affect the contract that we have with Nate Siccar for the engineer?
He's going forward.
Okay, well, this.
Yeah, I mean, that's, what, what was asked was FEMA, somebody asked what of those H&amp;H suggestions we were choosing. So I went out.
Which one of the four?
Got out, went out to Nate and asked him how far along he is in the design, and he wrote back with some explanation of what he's suggesting, of some kind of a metal thing with a, in a concrete base or something like that.
Yeah, it's a pipe arch.
Pipe arch, thank you.
Aluminum pipe arch, galvanized pipe arch.
That's out of my scope.
I mean, too, I had never heard that.
But all that information, them having that information will allow us to still apply for an, for an extension.
That's correct.
Because, because they have, especially the estimate from DeWolff, and.
They have everything they need, Chris, to move forward.
And that extension will allow, give us another year?
Up to 18 months.
Okay, great.
And I have to write that extension before December 14th of this year.
But we're good to, we're good to do that. We're not waiting on anything.
We're waiting on them to get it all through this process, because not only is it going to have to go to mitigation, it's going to go. it's going to go, have to go to environmental and historical. It's going to have to touch all these folks again before it hits the obligation.
Which brings me to my other comment. I don't know whether anybody heard this reporting by Pete Hirschfeld about the floods and FEMA's response to the floods. But I, I drew it up because it was, I didn't know the exact numbers. But a public records request has shown that the agency had, as of March fourth, incurred administrative costs of seventy-eight point three million dollars on a recovery mission that's distributed about forty-three million dollars so far.
That's the story about how much FEMA is keeping for themselves, yeah?
Yeah.
They're so bloated.
Wow, crazy. How about the discussion that, I'm sorry?
We're having that question.
What is the Town Highway number for North Hattie Bell Road?
What is the Town Highway number for North Hattie Bell? You got me.
It would be on the map that's in the, the old meeting room at the Town Office.
Okay.
In the corner, kind of right in the same corner where the Wi-Fi code is. There's a town map there.
Is that a check question?
North Hattie Bell wasn't created until you created it, Michael. It was Sand Hill. There was no North Hattie Bell.
So it's not going to be on the list there?
There was no, no, because thirty-one is Hattie Bell slash Sand Hill Road. There was no North Hattie Bell.
Okay, that's right. The select board created that to kind of eliminate your confusion about what the name.
So it would be thirty-one, then?
I'd have to look at the map. I can't remember the number.
If it's thirty-one, if it's an extension?
Yes, it should be added into it. But it's not.
All roads together, then it would be that number.
Thank you.
So there had been some discussion about when the bids have to go out and come in as far as FEMA getting, giving an extension. And Nate mentioned that he could have it so that the bids have to come in in December, but...
Stress Nate anymore.
Yeah.
I wrote to, when I sent all this information to the program delivery manager, I asked what other information does FEMA need to move forward? And we have a conference call, a Zoom call, Wednesday at nine AM. And I'll ask that question. And if she needs, if she believes she needs an RFP, even a draft copy of the RFP, then I'll let you know. Absent that, I think they have enough information to move forward. Because they're writing the mitigation plan, not us. And the reason why they are is we were told by our state representative, if you want to call it, intermediary between FEMA, that it's more expedient to have FEMA write the mitigation plan than to have a town to write it. So let them go forward, write the mitigation plan, you know? We'll sign off on it, and then go forward and do what we want. But at least we'll be able to have the project obligated.
So the idea that if we don't have the RFP, or the bids due until, like, winter? You thought we might get a better bid because contractors will be in their offices?
I saw that, yeah. But what FEMA will utilize are the numbers associated with that DeWolff and Associates report. If we come underneath that, that's fine.
Okay.
You know?
Good.
But they have numbers, concrete numbers. It's not something we just pulled out of the air. They have numbers that they can just, we can justify. And with all this other information, as long as they don't need to know the law or something else.
Or the caller comes from, still. That pipe arch comes from.
I know.
Or that, that'll come from that as well.
There was a cast.
Out of the mine.
Okay, so next is a nine AM Zoom conference call with FEMA on Wednesday. So other incidentals, I've responded to a request from FEMA. Wondering whether or not there is going to be any hazard mitigation projects for Wilbur, Foster Hill Road, and I wrote back, no, not at this time. We have no mitigation projects associated with these roads on project number seven four one four two seven.
And Mil, that, did you say Wilbur and Foster Hill Road?
Wilbur, Foster Hill, there's several other roads associated with that.
So that current, that the more recent landslides on, from Wilbur Road don't count?
Not for last year's.
Okay, okay. Okay, thank you.
To me, they don't count now. Because the work's already completed.
No, we closed that case.
If we wanted to do another mitigation project.
That would be, if they let us get information?
Probably, if you wanted to do something, we could. Was there any repairs done to Wilbur Road?
Nothing of any, nothing, nothing of any size, no.
In this, most recent? Where did all that material end up, come from, that ended up in their logs?
Uh, from the bank?
Yeah, from the hillside.
From the hillside, as it went down left Wilbur Road.
So it wasn't necessarily all road material?
Correct.
Okay, there are a couple of questions on North Hattie Bell Road, Nichols Pond Road, et cetera. Dates of work for Nichols Pond Road, Cape Fork Road, North Hattie Bell Road. And she calls it Natty Bell Road, which is pretty cool. She, she forgets that it's North Hattie Bell Road. So she kind of convinces them to Natty Bell.
And Natty Bell, oh, true.
N-A-T-T-I-E, Natty Bell. They're from, they're from south of the Mason Dixon side. Pretty interesting. So we completed that, we sent them the dates of work for Nichols Pond Road, Cape Fork Road, North Hattie Bell Road. We confirmed that North Hattie Bell Road was contract-only, and we're working on to define more clearly what work the contractor performed. And I had to answer a contractor's questionnaire if applicable. And it was applicable, so I completed that and sent it to the FEMA PDMG. What else? Safe pays two fifty. Oh, yeah, donated labor. We got in July of last year, there was some donated labor to help clean up the Town Offices. So I had sent them all the timesheets. You know, I had all the names of the folks and how many hours they worked. And at twenty-eight dollars and fourteen cents an hour, how much we should be reimbursed for that donated labor, but she didn't write that. She said, you have to read this and then send that to me.
Read what?
Read this and then send that.
Resist?
Read, read this.
Oh, read this, okay, sorry.
So, so she sent me this, I don't know, section to read for donated labor. She didn't tell me which form to fill out. She just read this. And then lastly, again, we sent the FEMA point of contact, reverse engineers, preliminary project designs for those two mitigation projects. And here's that lovely little state chart. There's no handouts tonight, so. Anyhow. Any questions? And he answers. Because I'm just about out. Oh, yeah, and FEMA disaster forty-eight ten, which is a new one. And I sent that email out, asking the select board if they would like the same team to respond to that. Apparently so.
Do we have to, like, vote on it or something?
Probably a good idea.
I'll make a motion to approve Skip and Danielle to be the disaster team for the new flood.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Skip.
So I will attempt to sign help for this new disaster information from Wednesday's meeting.
How much, what kind of damages did we have for this year? Now there was...
Uh, East Hill, again.
East Hill.
West Wilbury.
Okay, yeah.
Cabot Road.
County Road.
County Road, yeah. And a whole bunch of smaller spots.
Both of the bridges got dinged, right?
Both bridges got hit again. And then the, the third bridge, unfortunately, that was highlighted more so. Yeah, so it's, it's a fair amount. Nothing like last year, I don't think.
How much, Randy, I think you sent an email saying you have about forty thousand dollars worth of damages so far.
That's just for the new.
And that's not counting any of the machine time where trucking.
Forty-four thousand, one hundred, one dollars and fifty-two cents is for the new expense for twenty-fourth load. Yeah, those expenses could go away.
Could you send me Peter Davi's rates of pay?
Yeah.
And load evader rate in terms of, and stuff like that? How much is this?
Yeah, and benefits with branches.
Because I have to send that to you. Thank you, Randy.
So... Skip wanted us to talk about the bicycle sign procurement.
Yeah, I was in Montpelier co-op doing my shopping, buying my IPA, and I was approved by...
Were daring women? Wondering.
You gotta have some lady dramas. So he, he asked, he was wondering when these signs might be installed, because it's been forever since, and we've been talking about these signs, since the town plan was, was approved. So part of the town plan's priority action was to install recommendations for traffic coming and bicycle facilities. So traffic coming for bicycles included these signs. So that was a priority action in the town plan. And outdoor recreation goal, one of the goals in terms of outdoor recreation was to expand hiking, biking, skiing, snowshoeing, off-road motorsports opportunities on public, public and private lands. So these are all embodied in our town plan. And it just astounds me why we cannot have these signs purchased and installed in like, I don't know, eight locations along County Road. I just, I just don't understand why. That's still a lingering issue.
I think there's been some resistance on part of us. But we did.
You guys approved it. It was like several meetings ago. So just, what's the next step? The next step is, from what I understand, who's going to order them? The planning commission can't order them because they're not an authorized party to make purchases without going through the select board. This person who asked me can't order them. I can't order them. You guys have to order them. You have all the recommendations, the specifications of the sign, the cost.
I think we had an email from Michael saying the specifics, didn't we?
Are you talking about Michael Sadler?
What?
Yeah.
Oh, for you?
No, that's, all has come from Michael Sadler, who may be the person that was at the co-op. Yeah, and I remember from a select board, a recent select board meeting that the signposts were being bought or purchased. And the sign, we did have some discussion about the sign and the text on it, and then I think we kind of went with the sign that was originally proposed. And I thought that somebody was going to be ordering the signs.
So whoever that is.
Is that normally what happens? Is a select board member would be the one who orders the signs?
Well, it's kind of a rogue Town Highway thing. It's sort of signs that go on Town Highway. But, so I'm, I'm not sure, maybe we never decided who was going to wear the signs.
I was, from that meeting, I was under the impression that the signs were already ordered, that we already had the signs in place. I was just after the posts. My task was the posts and anchors.
I get, and I think that probably there's no reason, I, maybe I'm wrong. Maybe you all know something I don't, but there's no reason that they haven't been ordered other than the ball got dropped. And...
I agree. I could reach out to Michael Sadler to, I'm, I'm sure...
We have an email somewhere that...
I could actually just look for that email, and then I could forward it to you, Alfie, if you're willing to actually place the order.
If you're in agreement, I'll order them.
Okay.
Great.
I'll send it, I'll find it, and I'll send it to you.
All right. That's all I have.
Yeah, I don't think we totally agree with them, but probably was unfortunate.
Well, you know, I recuse myself from the vote on that because I didn't like the wording on this sign, but I'm not going to continue to fight it.
I think that motion passed unanimously, if I remember right.
Uh, it was just me and you.
Was it?
I don't think you recused yourself. I think you abstained from...
Whatever, yeah. I didn't vote.
There was a difference.
I didn't want, you're right.
But either way, it's kind of all irrelevant. Like, we did, we did approve it, and we, and I'm sorry that it's taken so long. Like, we should, well, make it happen.
And we did have a flood happen too.
That's true. The flood did happen.
Yeah, I mean, even if we did order the signs that next day, there's no way we could have gotten them up.
Right.
Leave the roads the way they were. Priorities. I'm not going to say it too loud, but we're starting to catch up with the repairs.
It's good, Chris.
Just happened to have it.
Bye!
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a good night.
She's going to like this.
Yeah.
I sort of assumed when I saw her.
Yeah. Okay. So... The emergency watershed protection program.
Emails should be sent to you.
You found it?
Yes.
Okay.
So we talked about this program at the last meeting. And you asked me to get you some sites and some names. So I did put a posting on Front Porch Forum and got six responses. And I created a list, which I, there are some municipal sites that, that I'm aware of that I mentioned. And then there are different Woodbury residents, resident properties. And one of these I was aware of from the crew folks from Harris Cove Road in Woodbury Lake. And they came, like, included that site. And then the others are all sites that came in from the Front Porch Forum posting. So there are eleven sites total. And so what needs to happen now, and what will happen if the Town Woodbury Select Board agrees to be a sponsor for this program, I will send in the list to the Natural Resources Conservation Services. They're the ones funding this program. And at some point, they will send someone from the NRCS to do a site inspection of the different ones that we missed. And that person will decide whether or not these sites are eligible for the program. And so the program, just to remind everyone, is not for any repair work, and it's only for the flooding that happened in 2024. Not last summer, but this summer. The main points of the program are protection, prevention, and public safety.
And the main points of the program are protection, prevention, and public safety. So any of it, like, let's use the bridge over Corksco Road, Alfie's going to repair it. But I have listed it as a site. There may be work that could be done on that bridge to help prevent it needing to be repaired in the future. And there's another dam, another dam, another bridge about a hundred yards, maybe even fifty yards down the road. It's privately owned by a fellow named Peter Halverson, who's a member of the Rail Trail Committee now, where the bank is eroding and his bridge abutments are also, they're still solid, but they're, another erosion event will. So that's a site that I've listed. So this program will pay for the hundred percent of the design work to try to prevent these different things that are happening in these different sites. And then any kind of construction to implement the design work, the program will pay for seventy-five percent. And then it would be up to the private landowner to pay the other twenty-five percent. Or with the municipal sites, it would probably be up to the town. I have listed a couple municipal sites that I feel are, like Ron Rathburn's, his property. If you ever go behind his house and his garage, you know, he's been doing Herculean work to try to save that property from Buck Lake Brook as it comes down into the village. Somehow, to me, even though it's his property, that really sort of feels like a town, something the town should be helping with, just because it affects the flooding in Woodbury Village that we're also trying to stop. The other, the Woodbury Mountain Road, commonly known as Ho Chi Minh Trail, Chris Byrom's property, has been a long history of erosion from the Class Four Road, Woodbury Mountain Road, onto her property. And this year, in 2024, there was some serious deposits of stone erosion and gravel from the flooding event there. And because it's a town road that's basically flooding onto her property, I kind of feel that that's a municipal site. So these are the sites that I've come up with so far. I don't think that there would be any more, but there might be. I knew him today, the fellow that bought the building that used to be our village store under Robin's direction. He mentioned flooding both from last year and this year. And if you ever look at the back of the building, it's very tight to Greenberry Branch and the culvert that's there, there's quite a bit of erosion there too.
And that's part of the Valley Lake Grove Culvert project that?
It will be, that will, yeah, that will be addressed when the new culvert is put in place, yeah, hopefully next year. So, so it won't be up to anybody from the town to decide what sites or whatever. It'll be totally out of our hands. But, and if the select board is willing to have the town be a sponsor for this, these projects and program, then we can move forward on it. If you aren't, then we'll just drop the ball.
What does it, what does it involve being a sponsor?
Well, do you have the handouts I gave you last meeting about what the town's responsibilities would be are? So sponsors obligations, providing land rights to implement repair work. So that would either come from the property owner or the town. Securing all necessary permits, seems like that might be part of the design work, but maybe not. So it means that we would probably have to, it involves a stream, you know, get permits from the state for furnishing, the local cost share. So that would be basically, if it's a municipal site, that would be the twenty-five percent. If it's a private site, then that's, that's not the sponsor's obligation, that's the landlord's obligation. Or so I was told by Brian Boyd at the Central Mont Regional Plan Commission. Accomplishing required works of improvement to remove imminent threat of life, to life of property. So if we're going to commit to the projects and the design work, then it sounds like we're committing to also the implementation of that. And then providing any necessary operation and maintenance going into the future. So those are the sponsor obligations.
Do you need us to vote on that, to make a motion and vote?
It would be good to have, yeah.
Should the dam done itself would be, be on your list?
That was last year. This is only for 2024.
Oh, okay.
But it's also for places that were not harmed, right? This is not for.
This is for places that were damaged with this year's flood.
Oh, okay. Oh, I thought it said it was.
It won't pay for the repair work. So like, you know, like if that dam had gone out this year, it wouldn't pay for the repair work. And I don't know what the desire would come up for prevention in the future.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to be the, what's the term? Not the sponsor of the, is it?
We have until September eighth to submit the list to the NRCS. So that would be before the next select board meeting.
Local cost share. So we'd be responsible for the cost share? I mean, that's.
For the municipal sites, yes. And there are, there are basically, I mean, you can say that Woodbury Mountain Road is not a municipal site if you want, or you can say that buying Ron Rathburn's is not a municipal site and it is private property that's being damaged. But, you know, obviously Ron's property is being damaged by Buck Lake Brook and the town doesn't have a municipal property. Chris Byrom's is being damaged by runoff from the Woodbury Mountain Road, so.
So Michael, are they going to, they're going to choose, right? You said it's out of our hands.
They will, they will pick a site. There are a couple here, in fact, there's three or four that are kind of questionable from my knowledge of the program.
So if we cross those ones off the list, are those out of the running for them to choose from?
Well, we could let them cross them off of this. And if they aren't, I mean, like, the two Beaver mitigation things, like Carol Ray and Woodbury, the Greenwood Lake Association. You know, like Carol Ray's Beaver Dam did go out this year and it did flood the village. So, you know, to me, that's a valid site. And whether, whatever the national, the Natural Resources Conservation Service, whether they deemed it a possibility or not, I have no idea. But it is a public safety issue, as is the other Beaver Dam that's on the Pelz property, which didn't, hasn't breached either last year or this year. But I know that with all of the heavy rain, that the people at Greenwood Lake are, you know, having property damages from the high level of water, which is affected by the dam on the downstream side of Van Nuys Road. There was a group of us that met to put in a baffle there last year. The Fish and Wildlife Beaver Person came. And I think the Greenwood Lake Association didn't want to spend the five thousand dollars that it would cost to put a Beaver Baffle in.
So that water would come down through the village?
It would come right into the village.
So how is that dam up by Kip's Old House, is that strong enough to hold?
That's a whole nother issue. That's an old historical dam. And there are several other dams at Woodbury that, you know, they have held the last two floods.
Yeah.
I do know of one that's on Packer Hagan's property that I do Beaver work on that was, it didn't go with either flood, but last year's flood did kind of make it look a little funnier than it does already. So, and I've been keeping a very close eye on that so that nothing will happen.
So who suggested this Greenwood Lake Association was?
Skip Markasani is the one that.
But these other names on here, Alex Pelz have been.
I just mentioned that because I wanted you to know that there was a meeting about that, the dam on the property that happened last summer, actually before the flood.
And that was the Pelzes, wow.
Alex was there, Tyler Brown from Fish and Wildlife was there, I was there. And there were about four or five people from the Greenwood Lake Association there, including Skip Markasani. I can't remember the other names.
Michael, can I ask an obvious question?
Sure.
They will go, they would design a protection program for these residents.
Yes.
And dependent, that could be like, that could range in cost, right? And the owners would have, as well as Woodbury, would have the option to say, that was really nice of you, but that is not something we're going to spend our money on, even though it's only a twenty-five percent.
Yes, I believe that there would be, that's a good question. You know, I'm not a hundred percent sure that if we commit to the design work, does that mean that we've committed to the implementation work also? I could find the answer to that.
Right, because either you could design a hundred thousand dollar.
Exactly.
Program for somebody and they'd have to come up with twenty-five grand, which might not be in their budget.
Right.
And so it'd be the same thing for the town.
Or they might.
It'd be good to know, I guess, before we.
Or they might think that it's, that it should be paid for by the town, but it really is a private property thing.
It seems like a great idea and really, as long as.
I could, you know, Brian Boyd, that question, and we'll probably get a response tomorrow or the next day.
There is a motion on the table to prove this and I would.
Could we put a pending?
Yeah, I would, that would be my, if you made an amendment.
The application has to be in by September eighth.
I'll amend my motion. So I'm going to make a slightly different motion to be the sponsor for this program pending, Michael, finding out whether or not we actually have to commit to going forward with the projects. And if that is mandatory, then we would not be the sponsor.
I'm just trying to see if there's anything in the literature that.
Mostly because you'd be buying, you could be buying something that you didn't necessarily know how much.
Right. Yeah, there's nothing.
The cost of your project.
I can't see anything in here that.
Obligates the town?
Obligates the town. If, if the design work was done, to actually do the implementation, or town or the property or, so I will ask Brian that question. I'll send him an email first thing in the morning. And, you know, if you wanted to make a decision pending that answer, and then the answer was, you know, like, that if the design work is, does, does the town or the property owner, are they obligated to do the construction work if they have had the design work done? You know, because it is, the program will pay for a hundred percent of the design work, but people should know whether or not, if they can afford the, the design work.
So that, that was pretty clear from Liz's motion that if the answer is no, you don't, you're not obligated to it, then, then yes, please apply.
But actually, can I ask a clarifying question before we vote on my motion? So they're gonna, if we go ahead and become the sponsors, they're going to choose from the projects only on this list, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Because they won't look for any other project.
If we had projects that we felt were more deserving than others, could we steer them towards those by crossing off the ones that we thought were less deserving?
I don't think so. I think it's up to NRCS to decide which ones are.
Okay, so like, do they already have this list then?
No, they don't, not yet.
Okay. So I guess what I'm wondering is, like, when we submit the list, do we, would it make sense to look at it and see which ones we thought were more important and then not submit the ones that weren't?
That's really a decision that we aren't really required or to make. I mean, this is totally, the decisions for these sites are totally in the hands of NRCS, not, not the town. I don't know if, you know, they might consider parts of the town, kind of like, you know, if they're going to build a tower or whatever, and the town has a difference on what would be done.
I think I might understand and clarify, and maybe you knew as well, Michael, but I think what Liz is saying, I don't think we could do that for any of the residential properties because I think that they've requested to be on there.
Okay.
So we wouldn't want to eliminate their, like.
Right.
Sorry, Carol, not happening kind of thing.
But maybe the municipal sites.
But the municipal ones, if there was one, Michael, that you thought, oh, that, it would be really great if that Buck Lake Brook site was chosen. Would we, would it be of value to pull these other projects off of that so that we were sure that that Buck Lake project, for instance, and maybe that?
Well, with the site visit, I know that Brian Boyd from Central Mont Regional Plan Commission is planning, I'm planning on being there, a select board member, planning on being there. We could have our road commissioner be there and we could put in the good word.
Got it.
That kind of thing. But I don't think it would jeopardize if, if the person felt that the other sites were totally valid too. I think that preference for one is not going to eliminate another. I shouldn't really speak for the NRCS, but I wouldn't think that it would jeopardize any of the others.
Okay. So like, I'm just wondering, you know, it seems like one of these might have a higher value to the town than some of the others.
I agree, yeah.
So you don't think it would be beneficial to the town to cross off the ones that are less valuable?
No, no, I think, you know, I think we should, yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter how many sites we have on the list. That's not going to make a difference in the decisions that are made.
They could approve all four?
They could approve all four, yeah.
Okay.
They could approve all eleven maybe.
What if they, do you think it's likely that they might approve one that we thought was less beneficial and then not approve?
Well, I don't, again, I don't think it's up to us to, to prioritize. It'll be up to that. I mean, part of this might be in that we would prioritize on which one we would actually complete first, based on how much money we have to cover the twenty-five percent. I mean, we could do that once the sites are approved and the design work is done. And again, that brings up another question, how long after the design work is done do we have to do the implementation? Another big question.
Is there money for implementation also?
There are, there would probably be other monies available, yes, I'm pretty sure there would be.
So this seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent is only for like private projects?
There, it's.
No, I think it's both of them.
Twenty-five percent, but there are, there is a special category, where, let's see that. Where they would pay, yeah, okay, so NRCS may bear up to seventy-five, seventy-five percent of the eligible construction costs of emergency measures. However, there's a ninety percent within limited resource areas as identified by the U.S. Census data. And I would be willing to bet that Woodbury might be in the limited resource as a small town.
Okay, so if that's a typically cost share, seventy-five percent USDA, twenty-five percent sponsor.
So what do you think, Dan? You think we're ready to vote on this?
Yeah. I think there's not a lot of danger there. Once they're going, they come out and look at all those projects and they'll have some criteria, they're probably not all going to be eligible.
Yeah, that's, I, I have no idea.
Probably not all good ideas. I mean, I don't know what you could possibly do with that building on the corner here.
Right.
Let's build them a new foundation.
I'm just reading a couple questions. So, yeah, I mean, I think having that part of the motion that if, if. if the program, you know, if the design work is done and then the landowner or the town is not willing to come up with the 25% for the, you know, are they committed with the design work to also go forward with the construction work? That's a good question, I definitely would want an answer for that myself. And I don't, I've been kind of quickly trying to find anything in here about that, but there's nothing mentioned.
I'm sort of surprised that they would commit to paying for the design.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Without some sort of commitment to pay for the actual work.
Or if there's a, you know, something where you end up having to, if you decide not to do it, that they don't, that the cost of the design work is, is, we're obligated to that. I can see that.
Or maybe they just choose the, choose the projects and then the design work doesn't get done until it's agreed upon.
That could be true also.
I guess without a design, you wouldn't really have a sense of cost necessarily, right?
Well, I think the form that, the decision we're trying to make tonight is, are these projects eligible? And Mike's gonna send that list in, they're gonna decide, are they eligible? And then the design starts. And the decision of, can the homeowner take care of this, their affair? So I don't think we're really deciding the whole.
Right, just whether to go ahead and let them start the process.
Put this list in front of them and let them decide which ones are eligible.
And, and you know, if we find out that, I mean, we could, if the person came and did all this and said, "Okay, I'll approve the different sites", we should definitely have an answer to this question by then. And if it is that, if you go for the design work, that you are committed to the construction work, you know, we can, after the sites are validated or not validated, we can say no. There's no obligation until money has passed to the town, I think, or the landowner. Actually, it'll be to the town for all of this. So, but I'll find out the answer to that question. I don't see anything in the literature that answers that question at all.
So these people who put their names in here, they are aware that if it goes ahead, they'd have to pay something?
Yes, I have, having my, on my list to meet with everyone who has contacted me, private landowners, I still have Peter Hired, Glazer, I haven't met with him, I haven't contacted Ron about this, and I haven't contacted Chris Byron. And then I still haven't made it, I can't find any contact information for that group of people that came to the select board meeting. So I'm just gonna drive down to the end of the road. Hopefully, there'll still be somebody at one of those camps.
You're talking about the Herex Cove people?
Yeah.
I'm friends on Facebook with one of them, do you want me to try to get ahold of her?
Sure.
Okay.
And if you wanted to give her my contact information and tell her why.
Yeah.
But they, but they put their name in here, or you put their name in here?
I put their name in here because that, and I, that seems like the perfect project that would assist a number of property owners. And, you know, it's really not the town's responsibility to do anything with those trenches that had formed from the flooding. That's town property that's flooding onto their property. Wasn't the road this year, and they received actually worse damage, I think, on their property this year than they did last. So that's like the perfect project for this thing. So, yeah, I just put it on. I mean, when I first read about this, that was the first thing I thought of. But I haven't contacted any, I tried to, but I can't find any information, can't find, other than going and knocking on the doors.
If some of them are town residents, give me their names and I'll-
Okay.
Work my magic.
Okay, I'll give you a copy of this. And, yeah, for the Herex Cove Road folks, there's a number of names. And Gerard Blazer did send me an email, it just came in today, so I haven't responded to his email yet, but I will try to meet with him. And I'm very much aware of what's happening up at Gwen Marcia's property from the color, putting some Eater stuff up there. And I haven't contacted Paula McLaughlin on Woodbury Lake yet.
But she contacted you?
She contacted me, and I've driven by there a number of times.
Yeah, I think she works during the day.
Before September 8th, I'm gonna meet with all these folks. And I sent them this little flyer thing that came out, and have made, made it known to them that it's not the town that makes the decision, it will be, that there will be a site visit from the NRCS. And also, I've let them know about the 25% that they would be obligated to help pay.
So do you have what you need?
I guess so, yeah.
We need to vote on the motion.
No, we didn't vote.
That would be-
We started to vote, I made a motion.
Okay, you made a motion. The motion was?
To agree to be the sponsor pending, Michael, finding out whether or not it would actually obligate us to go ahead with the construction work. And if the answer is that we have to, then we don't necessarily agree to be the sponsor. But if the answer is that we don't have to go ahead with the construction work, then we will definitely be the sponsor.
Okay.
Okay. I'll second that. On favor?
Aye.
So when I get an answer, I'll pass that on to the people. And if it is a no, or if it is that we go ahead with the design work, then we are committed to the construction work, then I'll just say, it would have been nice if that was stated in the flyer. And, but if, if we have to be committed before we even know what it's gonna cost, sorry.
No, thanks, but no thanks.
Right.
So, Michael.
So this one is a little bit easier and less complicated.
Wait, I have another one for you.
Oh, okay.
I got this thing about the MERP.
Yeah, I can, I can explain what's happened with that. We did get awarded money for that.
Can you back up and tell me what MERP is?
Okay, Municipal Energy Resilience Program.
Yep.
So, from the grant agreement, and we were kind of focused on the town hall and possibly the town office for that. What wasn't clear to me from the grant agreement, and it's not in the text anywhere, is that we had to require, or request, an assessment of the two buildings to be done in order to qualify further. And so, in the grant agreement, it doesn't mention requesting an assessment, it just mentions that eligible for funds would be, you know, like we did with Fish and Sea Vermont. Just have a, so that didn't happen. So the plan that we had for the town hall and maybe the town office were no longer eligible for. We still have the funds, and we could still use them. One thing that Sam Lash from the Central Mountain Regional Planning Commission mentioned, and Diana, you were looking into this at one point, is we could do the window dressing project. And we could have the, the parts, the windows that are made in that training project be for the town hall. So it's kind of a, you know, a booby prize, sort of. We could just send the money back too. I mean, I was kind of upset that somehow that wasn't clear in the grant agreement, that we had to request an assessment.
There were three, there were three phases to the program. They were giving out these $4,000 grants to help towns like energize an energy committee or something like that, and come up with ideas of how to help people and save energy and all that. And then, and then if you want to go to the next phase, there is funding for energy audits of public buildings, and these are very serious audits done by a bunch of engineering firms that they have contracted with, buildings and general services. And after that, the, it became competitive as far as grants to actually do the implementation of measures was competitive. And they made it clear that they were going to fund the things that have the most potential for saving energy, and I don't think any of ours do. Our little buildings don't use a lot of energy to begin with, so.
This whole program was pretty much designed for larger municipalities. I mean, we could have some different talks and pay, you know, some, I mean, it's all kind of foo-foo stuff.
Yeah.
So.
We haven't been able to get an energy coordinator for how many, many years?
Right.
Many years, maybe you were the last one.
Well, yeah, I was, I was listed in the town report, but I'm-
Yeah, and, but it does also say that the money must be fully obligated by December 31, 2024. So.
So we could do the window dresser thing, you know, we could make store windows for the town office and the town hall from that, and get some benefit. Or I could just say, you know, sorry-
Maybe we could buy some, actually buy some insulated shades for the town office, because I don't see those-
I could ask if that's a-
I don't see those, those handmade windows from the program there as being right for those windows. Because those windows need to have shades.
I can ask that if you-
Anyways, you know, I mean, it would be good for the town hall, which doesn't have shades anymore.
Right.
Again, that, one of the things about those windows is you have to be able to take them down and store them in the summer, and that's a problem.
Right.
At least in the town hall, not so much in the town office.
The boiler room there, there is some stuff stored there, but I don't know if they'll even, I don't know if they'll fit in there.
Well, Robin's gotten it pretty much cleaned out, but it's still pretty full. So.
Yeah, the tabulator base takes up a quarter of it.
Yeah.
It's stored in there, okay.
And then we've got the voting booths and stuff, yeah, so.
Well, we could just say, "Sorry, we really don't feel that we want to spend this money on anything, and you can have it back." I don't, did we even get any money?
They already sent it back once. Didn't we already send it back once?
No.
No.
No?
We told them once that we weren't interested.
That we didn't want it, and then, yeah.
And then I kind of-
And then they kept fucking us, "You really don't want it?" Well.
But I thought we could get, you know, an energy audit from the town, for the town hall. I mean, the one that we had done before was, well, pretty half-assed.
Well, the building has some deficiencies as far as what could be done, but anyway.
Yeah, well, the energy audit that we had done could have been a lot better. And it would have been definitely much more informative and something to work from.
Yeah.
But it wasn't, in my opinion.
Okay, so there-
So what would the select board like to do with that money that we were awarded?
If we can't find anything to spend it on by December 31st, we can still have that.
So you don't think the window dresser thing would be?
I really don't, I really don't see it. And I'm not sure when those, when those workshops actually happen, if we could go into, get involved with the one in Craftery, because the Harvard one really kind of fell apart.
Well, what Sam was suggesting is that we actually host one.
Oh.
And I think, if we were to have that on the list, it would be obligated, it might not be stamped, but it would be obligated.
Do you think that's what they meant?
What does obligated mean?
Fully obligated.
What does obligated mean, because you gotta get the money?
Okay.
So if you're obligated to fund, so I'm part of that workshop that's building these things in Craftery.
Oh.
In this town.
Really?
Yeah, so we had a group, two guys come out, came up to the house and measured what we needed for the summer. So I volunteered to help make those, and also any others that they need, you know, crafted. So you could perhaps-
Great, so did you go to the measurement training thing?
Because you didn't have people trained. You didn't have measure them. They had, you know, laser measurements, measured height, depth and width. And so based on that, the frames are made in Maine, and they're assembled in Craftery, so it'll be part of that assembly team. But you should be able to get some, well, just to measure, to have those.
You should be able to, we could probably get somebody, well, if you have the measurement training, you could-
I don't.
Oh, okay.
I don't.
I can check in with the person at the Central Mountain Regional Planning Commission to get a better sense of-
They're gonna send us to some kind of outfit that, I mean, a group in Berry, Montpelier area. I'd really rather stick with the Craftery people, because they're, they're really far advanced, and they've been doing this for years.
I think Sam was suggesting, the person from the CDRPC was suggesting that Woodbury host one.
Yeah.
And then, and then the windows that get made in this sort of training would be for the town hall, maybe for the town hall.
So.
Well, we can't, we can't make the windows during, for training. I mean, you have to have the measurements, and then you have to send them off to Maine, and they put it all together, and then put, and then they send the piece. Right.
And so the forms come in sticks.
Right, right.
So you put those sticks together, and then with the plastic.
Wrap it, this plastic around it.
And that's it.
Tell you what, let me get a little bit more clarity on this particular project that was suggested, and-
I'd be happy to make them.
Okay.
I'd crush them.
Be happy to.
It's, I've heard that it's fun. I've heard that that's a part of the project that, that is fun for people because you get to go and community thing and put stuff together.
Two thousand six.
Michael?
Oh.
Just real quickly, a very specific question. This $4,000, could it be used towards the purchase of new windows to replace the windows in the town office? Okay, I figured it couldn't. It's unfortunate.
So let me get a little bit clearer on this whole window dresser thing, and I'll report back at the next one.
Yeah, it's crazy that you could spend it on plastics, but not on windows, whatever. Yeah, ask that.
So jumping back into Merum Sea Watership Protection Program. Third paragraph, it says, "NRCS may bear up to 75% of the local construction costs of emergency measures, 90% within limited resource areas. The remaining costs must come from local sources in convenient form of cash or in-kind services." So in-kind services, to me, opens up Pandora's box for in-kind services.
Well, let's say like, like the 25% for Woodbury Mountain Road to fix the erosion problem, or to the design work, if the town road crew did that work, that would be in-kind.
Yeah.
Well, we'd still be paying for it.
Yeah, we would be paying for it.
Yeah.
But that would be our, we are, you know, we're paying for it through material and labor as opposed to just, you know, forking over the money to a contractor or something like that.
Right, but if it was a residential project, it's a-
If it was a, the town would be involved in any of, any of that. Now the road crew fixed somebody's-
Fix. Complete design with a scuffle of damage. NRCS may require a sponsor to construct the sign. Who wants to stop in there? So. Next. Somebody wants to be on the Conservation Commission?
Yes, Natalia Zahn and Libby Case.
And who?
Libby Case.
Okay.
Natalia's been coming to a number of meetings and would like to be appointed to the Conservation Commission, and Libby Case would also like to be appointed. We discussed this at the last Conservation Commission meeting, a couple weeks ago, or later than last week, and we're all in favor of their being appointed.
That's a fun job.
It was a fun job.
Don't they, when I retire, I'd like to be appointed to the conservation commission?
Do you just need our approval? Do you need us to vote on it?
Well, the site needs to appoint a plan to the committee or.
We have five now, you know, we have five?
We have five. It would be nice to actually have some female participation, it's all, old guys with the exception of Kylie Briggs at this point.
So like, so Chris, Michael has got two candidates who want to be appointed to the conservation commission, Libby Case and Natalia Zahn.
I make a motion that we approve.
Yeah. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That was easy.
Yeah.
Okay. We're not going to do the town hall roof, and we did approve the bills, so the only thing left on the agenda is this paperwork from V Trans, and I don't know whether we really all have to listen to this. What it is, is a revision to the rights of way that we gave them last year to let them use our property for the, for the big culvert project. And they want to give us $3,500 for all our efforts, I guess. And.
Better than the sharks thinking we are. It's better than the sharks thinking we are.
I guess.
They have cement culvert and a brick heap. Wants to paper park it.
There's a, they've given me a detailed map here with different numbers, lot number seven is the one where the culvert went all the way through, and they maintained the right of way to, to fix it, I mean, not the culvert, but the stream. Lot eight had, was the old, the other park, which I guess they had a couple of signs there. And then lot five was the road, Valley Lake Road, they had a couple of signs installed there. And the town of Woodbury, lot four, was the place where they had installed some signage on our, you know, for the, for the signal, signals that they had installed, basically, that's that. So, if anybody wants to see anything more.
The paper, the bicycle signs.
Huh? I was thinking that we should replace that one tree though in the island.
Yes, and I spoke, the planning commission talked about that, and Michael Sadler, who is a landscape architect, suggested a tree that would probably survive there.
Yeah.
Which is a linden tree.
A what?
A linden tree.
Okay.
I don't know if you've ever been, if you're in Montpelier and you're in front of City Hall, there's some very nice linden trees growing right there. So the other mountain ash tree that is still alive is just barely alive, so.
Oh, so should we do both?
I would do, I would suggest that you do both. The other trees, the yew trees are, seem to be surviving. The little, the little.
Oh, the little shrubs things, yeah.
They get buried under snow all winter and are still alive.
They're not, they're not growing very much, but they're there, yeah.
And Peter and I did the work to plant those, I would be happy to help be the planting of the, the new ones, so. Might want to wait till spring at this point, but.
Well, if they give us the $3,500, we can just put it away and don't forget what it's for.
Can we ask for the money back because they gave us a smaller sized culvert?
Dan, you want, Liz just told me the only reason we're going to skip the RFP.
Because I haven't written, done my part.
Got it, okay.
Sorry.
Nope, that's fine.
But we use you as an excuse.
Yeah, and, and I sent it early this morning, so.
Okay, oh, God, there's another one? Oh, geez.
Yeah, you gotta read the most recent version.
Okay.
I don't know the dates in my list.
Uh, they seem really soon, but.
Did you, anybody want to look at these in more detail?
Um.
So, well, here, here are the.
Here's the original and, and a copy of each of these four, and they have to be signed and notarized, so if you just.
And this is, they're giving us money for the use that they've already used.
Exactly.
We're not authorizing anything new.
Right, right, yeah, that's what I thought when I, I said, I saw things like that, oh my God, they're going to do some authorization by then.
Yeah, okay, sure.
It's just because last year, when we gave them the right to use that property, things were probably totally different. Now I don't exactly how it is, so.
So, in relation to this, this RFP, I will go back and change the dates again and resend it.
Okay.
Because I think it was a pretty ambitious timeline anyways, if we approved it tonight, so I will change it to kind of more reflective of our next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks for all the work on that.
Do you want to authorize me to sign these? Because I have to, has to be notarized and all that stuff, so.
Yeah, so do we not all have to sign it?
No.
Okay.
I move that the board authorize Diana to sign the.
Grant of temporary rights.
Grant of temporary rights.
On the Vermont Agency of Transportation.
Is there a second?
We aren't seconding these.
Your rights.
They have to, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Diana. How about?
Has to be notarized, so I'll have to go down to the office and do that.
Do we have any, took away my agenda here.
We just had built and pay all orders, or we had other business tunnel that we're not doing. We already signed the orders, so.
We can, we can adjourn so Jerome can start packing up?
I think Jerome looks like he wants to go home.
Motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.